Before we begin, I'd invite everybody to stand and join me in the pledge, and then I'll bring the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity you give us in life to serve others. And God, we pray that tonight will be just that, that as council and elected officials, Lord, that you'll guide us as we make our decisions and you'll help us discern what is best for Springdale. And we trust you for that now and ask you that in Jesus' name. Amen. I'd like to again welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. We do have large print agendas available if anybody in the room would like to use those. And all that said, now I will ask our Rose Lawrence, who's sitting in for Denise, our city clerk tonight, to call the roll.
Mayor Doug Sprows?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson? Kevin Flores?
Here.
Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fuggerus? I knew it.
Mark, she's been working on that like all day.
Ernest?
Here.
Fuggerus?
There you go. All right. Well, we do have a quorum. Everybody is here, I believe, accounted for. And we'll pick up at item four, which is the item, it's the agenda item that the council sets aside each regular meeting to hear comments from our citizens. If we have anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda, feel free to go to the microphone and please make your comments. Nobody. All right. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. Item five, council, you've had an opportunity to look over those. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Move for A and B.
Move for approval of minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, that's all right. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Now, item six. Is that a motion, Amelia? A and B. Okay.
Second.
And we have a second. Roll call, please. You okay?
I'm not used to their names yet.
Okay.
Or their voices. Okay. Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
I'm yelling here. Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson? Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. Move on to item seven. This is a, I'll go ahead and read it, a resolution to appoint Elmer Rodriguez to the Public Facilities Board of the City of Springdale. Scott, do we need anything to add? The council's had an opportunity to look this over. Elmer, I think, is a great, great pick. This comes as a recommendation and he would be replacing Blake, Blake Handy, who has moved out of the area, so, or out of Springdale. So, I would entertain a motion to approve Elmer to the Public Facilities Board.
Elmer's a great guy. I know him well. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment or questions? Anyone? Okay, Rose?
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
All right, good deal.
I didn't vote on that one.
Oh, Kevin?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin. Flores?
Yes.
Thank you. Powell carries eight zero.
Thank you. All right. Item eight, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations, Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item on the agenda is actually an ordinance to correct a Scrivener's error. The legal description that was included on the previous ordinance was, had a mistake in it, and this would replace this with the correct legal description. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 5571, which rezones certain lands from agricultural district A1 to low, medium density, single-family residential district SF2 and declaring emergency. And this wasn't a staff error, this was a surveyor error, just so everybody needs to know. I knew you'd say something, that's why I brought it up.
Okay. Move the ordinance, pass.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Anyone else in the room? Okay, Rose?
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Adams, or Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Has emergency clause. Move the emergency clause be adopted. Second.
Okay. Emergency clause.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
If the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is an amendment to the zoning ordinance on the creation of the Springdale elective enhancement districts that we talked about at the joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the City Council. What this allows us to do is to create two areas adjacent to the downtown area that a property owner can select to be able to use the good things or whatever they think is important out of the Form-based code. And it is an optional, and this is the ordinance that would put it into place. Same procedure, they would file a, like a rezoning application for this seed district, this map that you see on there and that's included, gives us the guidance of what kind of Form-based code district it would go into, and then they would follow the requirements of the Form-based code for that piece of property. Okay? Title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending Article 4, Section 5 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Make a motion if the ordinance pass.
So, the, real quick question, the original seed has already been approved. This is just the amendment?
This is to amend this whole thing to put it in the zoning ordinance so it exists. So people can come in and apply for it and we can start using it.
So we're voting on the whole thing?
Right.
Opt-in to it if they choose. I'll second her motion.
It's an optional.
Yeah. It just has to go into the zoning ordinance to give that option. It has to follow the same procedure.
But each individual owner has to request it to be included, and they're not required to be in, which was the biggest concern.
Just gives greater options for developers and development of particular properties, especially.
And also gives developers an opportunity to put two or three pieces of property together if they wanted to, or two or three property owners to go together and make an application together if they want to do that as well. Yeah.
Okay, I believe we have a motion, but?
Second.
We do, you have a second now? Okay.
Pay attention, we knew that.
Yeah, okay. It was hard, I had to hear it through all the chatter. Okay, Rose?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson? Flores?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Emergency clause.
Powell.
Brian made the motion. Who seconded? Randall?
Randall, thank you. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
If the ordinance emergency clause carries eight zero.
You're doing a good job, Rose. This looks easy on TV. All right, Patsy?
The next item on the agenda is making amendment to the boundaries of Form-based code. The property owner of the property just south of the lots that the Airport Commission bought on Emma Street wants to be included in the Form-based code. And what we're doing here is adding that as part of the Form-based code area itself and taking that area and the lots that the city owns and making those as campus type one, which is the same as the Jones Center and all that. And right now, the only way we can adjust the property boundaries is for a property owner to request to come in. Title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending Chapter 32 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, the Downtown District Form-Based Code, declaring emergency and further purposes. And you'll see that there's a map of the area and a list of the parcels that are affected with this ordinance.
And this is the original Form-based code for the downtown?
Yes.
Middle part.
And this piece of property was not included at the time when we were doing this, putting this all together, it was a piece of property we thought might be needed as part of the detention area for the airport. And it has since been purchased by a different group, and they have a use for it that fits into campus type one, and they're requesting that was put into the Form-based code area.
Make a motion, the ordinance pass. Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment or questions?
He made the second? Brian?
All right, we have a motion and a second. If there are another, other comments, Rose, I'll ask you for the vote.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Second, Rose, Brian.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
If the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right, great. And that's the last emergency clause you'll have tonight. Yeah, okay, good deal. Finance Committee Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Thank you. The Finance Committee met last Monday night and forwarded three items to the council tonight. The first item is item 9A, found at page 38. And I'll read the title to that resolution. "A Resolution Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds to Acquire a Portion of Land from Carleen King for the 40th Street Project, Falcom Road to Spring Creek Bridge, Project Number 18BPS4." This is to offer a little bit more to accept her offer and for settlement of that. And the council did, the committee did forward that to council with recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Rose?
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson? Carries eight zero.
The second item from the committee was with the same property owner, but it's a different piece of property and it's also for the settlement of condemnation lawsuit. And the title to that resolution is "A Resolution Authorizing the City Attorney to Settle Condemnation Lawsuit Wherein Carleen King Is Defendant." Council, I mean, the committee forwarded that resolution to council with recommendation for approval.
Resolution pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further comments or questions? Okay, Rose?
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
The third item from the Finance Committee had to do with an uneconomic remnant, a piece of property that was acquired by the city for purposes of construction of the roundabout, I believe, in that, right, a roundabout and that it left this little piece of property as an uneconomic remnant. And so, the title to this resolution is "A Resolution Authorizing the Transfer of Property to Travel and Transportation International LLC." The committee forwarded this resolution to the council with recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? All right, Rose?
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Item 10, committee of the whole. Who took that at committee? Mike? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. We had two items last week. We met committee as a whole. Both of them were forward with the recommendation for approval. The first one is "A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk of the City of Springdale to Accept a Gift of Land from Fellowship Club, Inc." Let Ernest, if he wants.
Sure, this is a little over eight acre piece of property located just across from Bluff Cemetery, just south of Sanders. We believe that this would be a good addition to the trail once it's cleaned up. And Frank Kelly with the Fellowship Club's been very good to work with, and we appreciate his offer of donating this property to the city.
Move the resolution pass. Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Rose?
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Second item we had, like I said, it was recommended with approval as well. "A Resolution Authorizing the Transfer of Real Property Titled in the Name of City of Bethel Heights to the City of Springdale." And I'll let Ernest speak on that one.
Thank you. This is just a cleanup mechanism because there are several parcels of property that are still titled in the name of the City of Bethel Heights and need to get them into the City of Springdale's name. And there's maps showing where these are located.
Move the resolution pass. Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Just kind of a heads up, and I think you all, I may have already mentioned this, but in the future, we're going to be, continue to talk with Springdale Water Utilities. There's probably parts of this, some of this property that especially connected to Bethel's old wastewater facilities that we'll probably want to split off and give back, give back to the Springdale Water Utility at some point. But we don't have, rather than wait and work all that out, we just thought we'd go ahead and get it all under the City of Springdale's name and out of Bethel Heights' name, and then just know that might be coming at some point. And we'll, and we'll probably have several of these properties that will be coming to you with offers to sell.
Just, just a general question. Why, was there a reason these parcels didn't come in automatically when we, when we acquired all the other land from Bethel Heights due to the?
This is all the land from Bethel Heights.
I know.
Yeah.
But this is all the land?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I think we had to transfer title on all of it. Is that correct, Ernest?
This is the land that's actually still, according to the County Assessors Office, still owned by the City of Bethel Heights. I know. My question was after, why wasn't it automatic after the election that it became? We actually had to have them assign new parcel numbers because they still had Bethel Heights' parcel number, so they had some Springdale parcel numbers before we could even do this. It's just a, it's just a cleanup. I understand cleanup, I just, but that makes sense if they had to go through the process of having the new numbers.
Okay, good. Any other questions or comments?
Has there been any issues for the citizens in the transition, mail? Any other issues that you know of, utilities or anything?
No, not much has made it to me, Brian. There's been some, we've helped with some cleanup of some areas. I know Ron, I don't think, is Ron here tonight, Finley? He's been, he and his crew, his staff have been up there a lot, working with residents. Now, they've been working with some businesses. I know the fire department has, has been, they've not been writing anything. They've just been going to see what's there, especially on the business side. And everybody's, for the most part, sounds like it's been cooperating real well. I think they've, I've just not had many issues get to me at all.
That's basically just my question. I've heard everything positive, everything positive. I just didn't know if there was anything that's happened that we didn't foresee.
I'm sure it's there, but I haven't, I mean, it just has to be. But I, but I haven't gotten it, yeah.
They're ecstatic to be part of Sprows Meadows.
Actually, I think everyone, for the most part, everything I've heard has been very positive, as you heard, and we'll keep, we'll keep addressing problems. I tell them, I said, "We, we can't fix what we don't know about."
Exactly.
So continue to let us know, you know, and I think we've been very open and accessible, so.
It's such a sigh of relief that they haven't been concerned about anything.
All right. Rose?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Good deal. Thank you, Mike. Any comments from council members?
I do.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure who to address this to, so I'll just address it to you, I guess, Mayor.
Okay.
It's a trail issue. That's what happens when I get out and ride. I rode yesterday the trail, I forgot what it's called, by the rodeo ground out by the fire training facility.
Dean's Trail.
Dean's Trail.
Yeah.
And so, a couple of issues. So I'll start from where I started. I started JB Hunt and where they're building the new bridge. Was it, you know, when the, when the construction company did the temporary trail, you know, where they tore, where they moved it and they used some really fine pea gravel, and that worked pretty good. Was that an agreement we had with them to do that, to use the pea gravel? Or do you know, or?
Yeah, we started out.
Because apparently they must have, a portion of that part, they must have messed up and went back in and used bigger gravel.
Brad, you're talking about by Pump Station Bridge?
Yeah.
The temporary ride around that was created, I guess, APAC, we worked with APAC to do that. At first, I don't know if this is what you're hearing, Jeff, or what you were talking about, but at first there was some black tar-like stuff that they thought was going to seal all that, and that didn't work very well.
And then they put down a little bitty pea gravel that worked pretty good too. But apparently, at least a portion of it, they've gone back, they must have messed it up, drove across it or something, and they've gone back in with just larger, whatever you'd call a dirt road gravel or, you know, bigger chunks, which is really hard to ride across. So I don't know, I didn't know if we had an agreement with them to use pea gravel. Not only do you know if that's a proper term or not, but tiny little gravel. It's a whole lot easier for bikes to run across than big gravel.
Crush limestone, isn't it? And, and we'll, we need to look at that. Which, is it toward the?
It's on the east side of Pump Station.
East side of Pump Station, okay. The good news is, we probably won't be using that much longer, but we need to, we need to look at that and see if it's something.
So then moving down the trail, the next question is, when I got to the intersection of Emma and 265, you know, you cross the, you use the stoplights there to get across 265, and you have those buttons that you push that will give you a protected crosswalk. The one coming back has not worked for a long time. And I don't know if we have a process for checking those.
That'll be public works that can check that out. So it's the one, if you're heading, if you're heading back toward downtown?
Coming back to the west.
Wanting to cross 265?
By the rodeo ground, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now let's check that out, Brad.
And then finally, going on down the trail by the fire training facility, there was a large sofa, you know how we dug out that ditch along the trail there? And there was a large sofa just thrown out in the trail.
Okay. When did you, when?
Yesterday.
Yesterday? Okay. Just make sure that's taken care of.
I'm not sure whose responsibility that is, but that was kind of.
We'll get it.
I'm looking for one.
I don't know how they got a sofa in there, but.
You know what? Well, I'm not going to say.
Okay.
Do we have an update on the damaged part of Downham Road that occurred a week or two ago after the snowstorm?
Brad, can you, why don't you come up to the mic and catch them up a little bit? You got Downham Road, and then we've got, I think, another bad area out west of 112 on, on an area that was torn up pretty bad by the weather and big trucks.
They went out, excuse me, and filled the bad areas with gravel, and they're keeping them graded until they can get back to put asphalt on it. Robbins Road, the dirt pit out there's been closed, and we've posted the street, no trucks.
We found a dirt pit that was operating that, in Springdale, that wasn't supposed to be.
They called it a grading for a facility at the college.
Yeah.
Turned out it was a dirt pit. So we, we pulled the plug.
Because that, that traffic, that, those dump trucks, you know, the weather was bad enough on some of these roads, but with the combination of that and trucks that shouldn't have been on it, that's where we, we got some problems, so.
So those are, those have temporary repairs, and we'll get back to them. Also, we're working with Ernest on a policy to address these large construction trucks on our small roads. There's kind of, there's kind of a loophole in our current ordinance.
Do you have, you don't have a timeline as far as when we can, when we're going to be able to get back with asphalt on those?
I don't, but I can find out.
Okay.
It's the same crew that's trying to prepare for the overlay project, so they're.
Right. And I know that one call, has to be called for that kind of stuff and all that too, so. Okay, all right. Thank you, Brad. Any other counsel?
Do they have an estimate on Pump Station Bridge? How long they think it's going to be?
I don't think anything's changed. It should be, when is it?
He said May.
May, okay. All right. Okay. Department heads, anything? City attorney, anything? All right. It's what you've all, what you've all been waiting for. I'll make it as painless as possible, all right? How's that? All right. It is my privilege, and then, and just so folks know, by, by state statute, the mayor has to present the State of the City address by the last, by the end of March each year. And so it's my privilege to present my 2021 State of the City address. This is my 13th such address and will probably be my shortest. See, I even put applause lines in there. But that's not because there's less to talk about. It's really just the opposite. There's so much happening that we could either be here a long time talking about it and there's no need for that. And I would leave out some things that were very important if I go down that road. So I just need to boil it down to hit a few high points. So let's start with a quick look back at 2020. And if you're like most people, I know, a quick look will do you fine. We don't, we don't necessarily enjoy looking back at 2020 for a lot of reasons. However, it is important that we take time to acknowledge the personal loss so many of our friends and neighbors have experienced. Whether the loss of loved ones or the loss of livelihood, no one made it through 2020 without living through major impacts from COVID-19. We continue to support and pray for those who are still suffering, not only from the virus directly, but also from the widespread effects resulting from it. Certain business sectors are still struggling and need our support. Many of our residents are still experiencing loneliness and depression. We all have opportunities to be God's light in the darkness for someone, and I hope we'll all recognize and take those opportunities when given the chance. As with any difficulties we face in life, there are also tremendous blessings if we just know where to look. I hope you've been as encouraged as I have as we see how the people of Springdale have pulled together through this. The residents of our diverse city, our churches, our healthcare providers, our first responders, our schools, our essential workers, our business community, our utility providers, our city employees, our nonprofit organizations that work to fulfill their various missions have all stepped up and continued to perform their duties with excellence, even while facing enormous challenges. 2020 was also a year of tremendous growth in Springdale. Just think about this, and we've touched on it a little earlier tonight, or at least related to it. In the middle of a pandemic, the voters in both Springdale and Bethel Heights overwhelmingly approved us becoming one city. In just a matter of days after the election, Springdale Water Utilities was already working to address existing sewer issues as all other city departments were hard at work ensuring a smooth transition toward providing services to our new residents. Both residential and commercial development showed strong growth throughout 2020, and the pace of that growth has only increased so far this year. Thanks to strong support by the people of Springdale for our local businesses, 2020 saw an increase of over 8% in sales tax revenue when compared with 2019. That's outstanding, y'all. And we need to be very, we need to appreciate that and be very thankful. very thankful for it. Our 2020 Census Complete Count Committee chaired by Catherine Burkhead worked through the uncertainties of the pandemic to encourage participation in the census. Because of COVID-related delays by the Census Bureau, we won't get our population numbers for a few months yet, but we are confident the tremendous growth we are experiencing will be borne out in the official numbers when we receive them later this year. Those numbers will benefit our residents for the next 10 years. Now, about 2021, there's no doubt we're still dealing with the effects of COVID-19. Many of our families are as well, and we likely will be to some extent for a while. But even so, if you were to ask Patsy, Christie, our Director of Planning and Community Development, or Mike Shamley, our Chief Building Inspector, or Brad Baldwin, our City Engineer, they would all confirm that their departments are busier than they've ever been. That's a good problem to have, and that's a great news for the future of Springdale and our residents. We'll also see many more changes within our organization this year. Many of our departments will be relocating in a couple of months. Some already have, as Phase One of the municipal campus is completed and as Phase Two begins. During this transition, we'll strive to respond promptly to any of our residents' needs, but we will ask for patience during those short periods of time while the moves are actually taking place. We'll also have some noticeable leadership changes come to pass this year. Alan Lord, the longtime Director of Shallow Museum, plans to retire effective June 11th. Alan has done an amazing job over the years as she has built and led her staff. Under her leadership, the Shallow Museum of Ozark History has become a nationally recognized research museum, as well as a valuable resource for our region's schools, and really, anyone interested in learning more about the rich history of the Ozarks. We will certainly miss Alan and wish her the best in her retirement. We also have confidence in the museum board and await their recommendation for Alan's replacement. Also, Rose Lawrence, my administrative assistant, will be retiring effective June 18th, just a week after Alan. And Rose has been helping us here tonight. That's going to be tough. Rose will have served this city for over 32 years. The first eight of those years, she spent working in the court for Judge Stanley Ludwig. Then she moved upstairs and became the administrative assistant for Mayor Charles McKinney. She continued that role during the 10 years of Mayor Jerry Van Hooce's administration, and when she steps down in June, I will have had the pleasure to work with Rose for over 12 years. I'm sure we'll all have more opportunities to better express our appreciation to both Alan and Rose as those retirements draw closer. With this council's approval, we've created and filled a few positions that are already paying big dividends for our city. Lourdes Potato, we know her as Lulu, most of us. She was hired as our city's welcoming coordinator earlier this year. We're excited to have Lulu on board with us. Lulu is working to develop and implement the welcoming strategy for Springdale. This is very important work, and I look forward to our city having an effective and sustainable welcoming program as the result of Lulu's leadership. Last year, our senior director, Lori Proud, brought forward a proposal to accept a Tyson grant that would allow us to hire a grant writer for our senior center. You approved the position, and Anna McKinney was hired. Anna has been splitting her time between researching and writing grants for the senior center and doing the same work for other city departments. While she has already been a huge help in the area of grants, we quickly recognized Anna also has strong skills in communications, as well as public relations. We've already begun utilizing her skills in those areas also, and we know she will continue to be a real asset for our city. That brings me to Colby Fulfer. About a year ago, you approved a new position of Assistant to the Mayor. The creation of this position allowed me to hire Colby to begin to work closely with Wyman Morgan, as Wyman began to work toward his retirement. That was a way we could provide some succession planning for the vital role Wyman plays in our administration. Over the past year, Colby has worked closely with Wyman, for sure, but as a result, he's also become heavily involved with almost every facet of this city's organization. Colby has developed relationships and worked closely with all of our departments, and many in our community. Over this past year, he has earned my trust, and just as importantly, the trust of our entire staff. I think Colby will tell you, he still has more to learn from Wyman, as Wyman continues to transition toward retirement. But the bottom line is, the decision we made over a year ago to create this position and hire Colby could not have worked out any better. With that said, I'm announcing tonight that Colby's official title has changed from Assistant to the Mayor to Chief of Staff. This change was expected and was accounted for in the approved 2021 budget. Department heads will still report to the Mayor, however, Colby will assist as directed with coordination and communication between the administration and the various city departments. He will also help coordinate with you, our city council, when, when you all have questions, he's, he's going to, he's going to be a big help. He's a great fit. Colby, like Wyman, is a problem solver, and most importantly, he's going to help ensure that our growing city will continue to provide prompt assistance when our residents need us. In closing, 2021 will be a big year for Springdale. You know, I've always been an optimist by choice. I think we, I think we choose those things, the way we look at things. Glass half-full guy, glass half-empty guy, you know? And I don't know why anyone would choose to be otherwise, but the truth is, we have been blessed beyond measure. If you've been watching the daily numbers of the new COVID-19 cases versus the number of vaccines being distributed, you've hopefully noticed that immunity is now spreading much faster than the virus. That's great news. And there will be some point this year, hopefully very soon, hopefully we're almost there, where we're going to see that the most devastating impacts from this virus are now in our rearview mirror. Based on development activity we see planned, our private sector is certainly preparing for a world after COVID, I can assure you. So, we, so must we continue to prepare. As a result, I'm confident 2021 will be a year full of groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings in Springdale. Now to my wife of almost 44 years, who is at her annual council meeting, I think this is the only one she ever comes to, but she does watch them from home. Sandy, thank you for allowing me to serve this city. Springdale has given both of us so much. We were both raised here, as were our children, and our grandchildren, for the most part, as much as they've been raised, they're still pretty young, but thank you for your patience with me when my body makes it home before my mind and attention does, because I know that happens a lot. I gotta catch up sometimes. Thanks to my family and friends who share me with this job, and finally, thank you to the people of Springdale who've allowed me another four years to serve as your mayor. If my plans hold true, I'll only be in this position for these four more years. I really believe by the end of 2024, it will be time for new energy and new ideas. Springdale will need a different skill set than it did when I was first elected in 2008. So, my overriding goal for the next four years is to set the table well for whoever follows. I know each of you have the same goal as council members. I've long believed and continue to believe, the most significant results of our work